Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Rattler's School Board Meeting for Hicksville Exempt Village Schools to order. Roll call please.
Carrier. Iden here. Jones.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
And Mark Hall.
Thank you, visitors, for being here tonight. We're always glad to have you and for your interest and involvement in our community. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna move things out of order here a little bit. Justin had called me today and had told him that he had received the approval for the safety feature that we want to put in in the foyer, that he was putting in for the school at no cost to the school in the foyer. So, he had a couple things he wanted to run by the board and if you could tell us a little bit about the approvals, Justin, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I was in here maybe two months ago, I think, spoke to you guys. And I haven't just been setting idle. I hired an architect and I got the plans submitted to the state of Ohio, which all of you have a copy. The state approved it, so all the fees already has been paid. And basically they give the authority to go ahead and put in the visitor entrance. And I wanted to come back and be clear with you guys and make sure everything's okay before I order the material in and purchase the metal detector. The other metal detector that's in front of you guys, that's the new metal detector that only picks up cylinder style objects. So, won't pick up flat piece of metal, will pick up a laptop or cellphone, and when it picks up barrels. I have one of those metal detectors. I'm gonna leave November 5th, I'm gonna go to Florida to the trade show, and I'm gonna go to Columbus, Ohio straight from that, so I'll be back by 15. But I did know if you guys would be interested in just using that at no cost and seeing how it works. It's portable, it's on wheels, you can set it one of the entrances. And again, it only picks up cylinder style objects, and when it gets alerted, it texts it via text to a cellphone or a couple of 10 people. Be kind of an easy way to try it out if you had interest. Kind of two things, I guess.
Yeah, we guys have a monitor.
I just like the feature that it's not going to fall, it's just gonna send a text message. It's only invisible, people know what's going on.
Correct.
And then it takes an photo image of the person. And is that the image they'll receive, a text message?
Yeah. No, you'll get a text message of a person going through it, you know, almost the whole body picture. Probably waist up, other face, body, who it is, set metal detector on, scanner system on it. And I think, should've got one for you Jeff to see, but as you guys can see, that one that I have is on wheels and it's just a portable unit. So, I would say, set it at the door, check it out, see how it works. If you say, "See this thing I've ever seen, I'm fine with it, if you like it, good too." But the visitor vestibule, thing that we talked about when I went out there and said, "That is more of almost a permanent thing." You know, if you guys don't like it, we can take it out, I'm gonna pay for it, I'll pay to put it in, I'll pay to take it out. Like, you put a panel in, two of those panels, and that's where we have to get the permission from the state of Ohio. Yeah, I'm clear, I got, I think in front of you, there should be a stamp on one of those pieces of paper. I know that this will be highly watched, and if something goes wrong with it, and I think so, I think we'll be really criticized. So, it's got the final Ohio stamp on it that it's okay to go.
Yes, so Justin, the one that you've been putting in here, that's your first one?
Yeah.
I think that's awesome, appreciative by everybody on the board, and I'm looking forward to having that put in. Hopefully it'll have success for you, and certainly something that other schools will view and ask about. And we'd be more than happy to share how it's looking for us here in Hicksville once that happens.
Tomorrow, I'm going to meet with the manufacturers, and I would like to try to want you guys' approval to order our materials. And then try to have it put in over Christmas break, when the schools shut down or...
Up the one up here?
Yeah. Yeah, I spoke with Eric about that today, I called him, and Eric got on the phone with you, and I sounded good to him as well, Eric.
Timing wise, everything would be perfect, yeah.
With nothing to vote on, we're all in agreement that we were the last time that Justin was here, that we want him to go ahead and do that.
I was saying yes to the temporary.
We're not saying yes to the temporary.
I wonder, do we need to make a motion to accept the donation?
Well, I think once it's in, I think yes.
Because, I mean, it is, you know... Or is it, I mean, because if we say we don't like it, you're gonna take it, you're gonna keep it. So technically, I guess, it's really, I mean, it is a donation, but it's still just property. So, I don't know how that would kind of play out as far as...
It's a donation, hopefully you keep it, and then you have to take it back.
Well, yeah, we're hoping you should keep it, you know, but...
Okay, so we can put that on next month's agenda, accept that, would that be okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, can we talk about this? We have a work session tonight. I want my principals to keep it every day.
That's perfect. And I'll get back when you're done. That will be at the Capitol Conference, and I know a lot of you guys will be there, so that... Will you listen, Justin?
That's great.
I'm coming down for one day, I've got a driver back there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Justin, appreciate you coming in. And let me know if there's anything we need to do to get this ball rolling, so that it's worked for Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move the four county career report up, so that it's as simple as that, can you do it?
Thank you.
Sure. Glad to have you, thank you.
On October 15th, four county had their 15th year anniversary open house. So, it was well attended, it was the same night as the wall of fame, honorees, and also the advisors all met that night. We had a board meeting also that evening, so... But it was, they did a very good job. Wish it would've been maybe a little better attended than it was, but they did a really good job. We also did our five-year forecast. Four County sitting in a very good financial condition right now. We have a little bit more revenue coming in than we're spending. The five-year forecast looks real positive. With the levy that went into effect a year and a half ago, it's been a real positive for the district. And resident values and ag values, you know, resident values went up, the ag value is gonna go down. But as far as four counties overall money with that, it's pretty much a wash. It really doesn't affect anything to the end of the day. And they're getting a big bump in public utilities, it's up 14% because of that gas line that went through. So, they're gonna get a nice check from the public utilities off that new gas. They're, they also, what's helping the budget is there's gonna be a few retirements this year of some senior people. So, and then enrollment is down slightly again this year from the last year. So, no, no reason why. I had no idea if enrollment's down across the four county area or not, but it is down slightly again. I think it's 1,100 some students, and the new year and ask that, I'm not sure that it's 1,100 some students. But, there's really not, there's not the negative report that seems to be, everything seems to be real good as well. Seems to be ran very well, and financial condition of it is very stable. That's all I have.
That's awesome, thank you so much.
Good to see you, thanks.
Okay, Eric, Director of Operations, can you part?
Yes. Moment season's about done, before it'll be snow season. Got some salt delivered last Friday, and by lock-in prices back in August, so it'll get a little bit cheaper. And then they deliver when it's time to deliver, and they got ahold of me last week and delivered our four skids. I'm hoping that's more than plenty, I don't have to get any more, I still had a couple of skids left over from last year, so... Also, one of the, another security upgrade we did, kind of police and fire was hoping we'd do this when the building was built, actually. And I know at that time, they were kind of concerned from the looks of the building. They wanted it to look like a main door card, you know, when you drove by, you see numbers and letters everywhere. So, you can kind of see the room numbers for the case there to be a cardiac arrest, or, you know, somebody got fired, or unconscious person, or a fire, or anything like that. They'd be able to pull up on the outside of the building and be able to see it, you know, just by pulling in. Upstairs, downstairs, courtyard windows, all the classroom windows are all numbered now. Also, around the exterior of the building, I just got the other one on Friday, I don't have it up. But the, all the doors, entrances for all the doors, have to go with numbers above all the doors. Kind of can come in handy too, I know when we go to bus driver training in Vanport, they have a lot of different doors you can come in. You don't know what part of the building to enter, and they'll send a letter to you saying to park in the parking lot outside door seven. And makes it nice and easy when you pull up there, you're not trying to go in where all the kids are going to gym, you know, for basketball practice or something. So, it kind of can maybe help direct traffic to the right areas of the building when we're picking stuff up or going to an event. So, those are all on. Winterized courtyard here a couple weeks ago, in the process. Since we're not in the playoffs for football, we're gonna get that on the schedule this week, towards the end of the week. Have the football fields all winterized and ready for, so we don't have any broken pipes or anything. We've had some issues with roof leaks over the nine-year period, and Carlisle Company, they're the ones that are the manufacturers of our rubber roof that we have on the back end of the building and above the library. Last year, they replaced a section that was about 50 foot by 150 foot long on one side of the gym, we're having some issues. It took care of all the roof leaks that we had, that was the main entrance doors to the gym. And once they found out that, it took care of our issues, we still had a couple lingering ones in the gym. Well, they came in September 24th, and they brought 10, 12 guys here, crane, I mean, they replaced the roof roof all for free for all of the warranty. So, pretty much our whole gym roof, our whole gym roof, our main gym is all new roofing, so hopefully we don't have any issues when basketball season comes. We don't have any water dripping or anything out there, so...
You haven't so far this rain since they've done...
Yeah, yeah, no issue so far. Last week, there's also, I've had some security things, I showed you guys pictures and stuff up before, some videos of some products. You can either replace the glass at the entrance doors, or put film over. There's a company, I still gotta go over the video, I haven't actually been sent the video yet because I was in Columbus in meetings. But we had a couple people from our staff go and watch the video, or actually watch the light demonstration at a gun range in around Toledo area. And it showed somebody shooting through the glass, all handguns, rifles, shotguns, high-powered rifles, you name it, they've done a whole thing. Six foot five, six foot six guy, about 300 pounds of baseball bat, you know, beating the crap out of that glass until he's out of breath trying to get through. So, it was pretty, pretty nice videos I seen. They're gonna have an activity the whole day that I'd like to share with, you know, everyone here, so... Kind of gets some ideas and possibly some other things we can do. And I was in Columbus kind of for your OASBO, but it's my Ohio Public Facility Maintenance Association, it's a yearly seminar. I go down to Columbus last week, Monday and Tuesday, and they focus a lot in classes. Usually they're talking about energy upgrades, lighting upgrades, and all that type stuff, which we've already done everything. So, it's kind of sometimes boring classes, but this year, you show up and find out a lot of the classes dealt with. How do you determine who to harm at your school, what type of staff members, what type of training should they have? So, they talk about a lot of that, they talk about security upgrades. Some of the workforce that were in the building that has buzzer systems, there's a lot of schools there that they have changed on all the doors. Now, they unlock early in the morning, every door is available for anyone to walk into at any time. So, it's kind of eye-opening to talk to some of the other maintenance guys and find out the nightmares they're having trying to make their building secure. Because they don't either have the funding, or they're not into a new building yet, so... But it was very informative for two days, and got quite a bit out of it, so that's all I had.
A big problem with our classrooms. That door outside every classroom.
Yeah, good design, copied it from California.
From Northwest of mine.
Yeah.
Which is pretty, maybe.
Oh, big nightmare, yeah.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, principal reports. Andy Joyce in the middle, will let you first.
All right. Past events, our fall sports season wrapped up. Congratulations to all of our athletes on a great seasons. We have parent teacher conferences on October 10th and 11th, and a big great turnout for parents this time, five through eight. A lot of parents there, so it was good to see everybody in the building. Our seven through 12 choir's put on a great fall concert on October 18th. Congratulations to all of our students and Mr. Olson and Mr. Pollock for that. Last Thursday, we had our Students of Corporate Luncheon, and all of our students who were chosen to sit with their teacher and have lunch. And thank you to, not here anymore, but Justin Kuhn actually purchased a pizza for us, so thank you to him. Some future things, we do have our Veterans Day Assembly on October 9th, that'll be Friday before Veterans Day. We're still taking, we're still taking any veteran that would like to come if they would please RSVP by Friday. Love to have anybody and everybody. A reminder that we'll have a two-hour delay in service on November 14th for teacher in-service. And November 15th, June 18th, we'll have our middle school musical, they will present Elf Junior. A few notes, I mentioned earlier, we talked a little bit more about the report card. Those officially came out midway through September, but you knew we had done pretty well. We've done exceptionally well, and I know that's just a step of what we do here on a daily basis, but I'm sitting in your office working today. Again, I'm getting phone calls from Cleveland schools, I'm getting phone calls from Anthony Wayne yesterday. Wanted to know, "What are you guys doing, and how can we replicate what's going on there?" So, I bet, I bet I've taken six or seven phone calls from districts from all of state Ohio, who've recognized and looked at the report card and said, "Okay, what are you doing? How can we replicate that?" So, again, it's incredible, an incredible honor that people are timing the calls and stuff, so we did very well. There was a report that I saw that ranked based on performance index, which is basically just solely the test, and then how well you did on the test. And that report ranked us 45th in the state out of every school in the state. And then I saw a follow-up report to that, that did adjusted income, which essentially said, "Okay, you asked me how you did on your performance index, but let's compare it based on what your income of your area was." And we finished third in the state. You know, that's, that's not divisions, that's not third out of, that's third out of the entire state. So, we did very, very well. Now, obviously, there's areas that we can continue to improve on, we're going to. We're focusing on some gifted stuff, trying to improve our gifted, we'll never be able to hit the gifted indicator, but we're working pretty hard here to try to improve our gifted score, those areas that we felt would be... And we're actually gonna sit down with all of our tested teachers. We're gonna do a data dive, and we're gonna be able to break in and break down the data, and look at every single question, standard, what we do well, what we can improve upon. So, we're excited about doing that, we're planning that in December, throughout the month of December, or January, with all of our tested teachers. Also, this, this quarter, we decided, we're going to send the students of the quarter, and one thing we decided is try to honor some of our teachers as well. And so, we had a teacher of the quarter this, this nine weeks in middle school. Any student can nominate any teacher that they feel like goes above and beyond for them in the classroom. And they just gave me a little blurb of why they thought that teacher should be nominated. What I did is I took all those nominations, printed off little tickets, and then pulled a random teacher of the quarter. And our teacher of the quarter this time was Mr. Farrell, and a well-deserved honor, he had medics who nominated him as their teacher of the quarter. And was very grateful, so congratulations to him for being our teacher of the year.
Jeff?
All right, so I'm gonna try not to duplicate anything here and state it, and then once I get to my mental report, while she's doing hers, I'm gonna turn on the monitor, and I'm gonna go to the report card, and just kind of do some key points and factors and opportunities and challenges that we have. So, past events, of course, again, like he said, school year's in full swing. It's great seeing all of the guests in our building, including a lot of people that take the time to come in and work with our, our classroom teachers. We have guest speakers, we have volunteers. For example, we just had our interview interviews, this is what this class puts on. And a lot of businessmen and women from our community come in and volunteer their time to help go through all of those interviews for the sophomores here that attend Hicksville High School. So, again, we appreciate everyone who comes in and, of course, donates their time. Parent teacher conferences, as he said, is actually pretty determined, I know on the middle school, high school side at times, we struggle getting parents in. We've become a little more independent when we've become teenagers. I will say that, you know, everyone has instant access to information nowadays, whether it's the power of school, checking grades, email. Every teacher has a phone in their classroom, so anytime we need a meeting with a student or a parent, you know, we make it happen. We have, we've actually had quite a few team meetings this year, not just during parent teacher conferences, but throughout the year. We will give our teachers and any student, bring struggling and bring them anything with them. So, again, we don't just focus on the parent teacher conference side, we try to make sure to have those meetings whenever possible. Couple things I want to hit too that have occurred, and actually, this one doesn't take place until November 2nd, but we started this at the beginning of the school year. Those are new house bill, I'm gonna forget the number, I'm gonna throw out there, 14, well, I probably just made that up. But it pertains to out-of-school suspensions. In the past, we're all aware that when you receive an in-school suspension compared to an out-of-school suspension. The in-school suspension allows you the opportunity to complete your coursework for credit. Out-of-school suspensions, you receive zeros for everything that you had that, those days that you were out. This day has decided that that's like kind of an unfair policy, and we are required now to give some sort of credit to our students when they serve out-of-school suspensions. In all honesty, I'm pretty supportive of that, of that idea, because, you know, I hate to say it this way, but, you know, some of those students have really struggled and receive out-of-school suspensions, their grades already are not the best. And then you always have the kids that just make a mistake, you know, and a good kid makes a mistake, and all of a sudden they get zeros for a day or two or three days, and they have a test, and a project due, and a report. I just think that it's kind of an unfair necessity that was used in the past that I don't feel is necessary longer. So, as a district, which is currently in a time where I'm gonna sit down and develop a new policy and make a decision on what type of credit the kids receive, I just want everyone to know that Mr. Hunter and I have had this discussion. And I had a few out-of-school suspensions this year, and I told the students, "Well, on their return date, they bring everything that's required of them, they will receive 100% credit the day of the return of the suspension. If they suspend it anytime after that, they get 0% credit, because it's not a vacation, it's supposed to be actually doing something at home." So, that's kind of the approach we've taken, but we still need to develop a policy for me, to make sure that happens. I wanted to give a shout-out to our entire district. I attended the OSBA momentum awards banquet down in Vanport. I actually didn't really know what that was, but for a second, Mr. Crenshaw and I received an email. We kind of mentioned that we should probably attend, because we actually received two awards. And of course, the OSBA, the House of Sports Association, they recognized Hicksville Exempt Village School District as a momentum award winner, and state District K-12 receiving an award. Mr. Crenshaw and I, I think I sent you a picture, but I placed the award on your desk, it actually specifically says Mr. Crenshaw and I on it. Congratulations on it. And then, of course, as a high school, we received an award also. It was, you know, it was great, there were a lot of board members, superintendents, current schools all at this banquet down in Vanage and Fort County. Bulbrey caught our school, our staff, our kids. Hopefully, get something around and develop kind of like a little flyer that we're going to add to ties out and give a paper, make sure we recognize the accomplishments of our entire district and the staff, so kudos to us. And again, the momentum award piques to what we're gonna talk to you about on our gray card, that we're closing the gaps, we're improving, we're being better in certain areas than we were in the past, so... And then, of course, fall sports teams, they concluded their season, we've had a lot of success this fall. I wish all our fall seniors the best, that they, you know, they're one-third of the way through their school year. I hate saying that, but a lot of times we, we had to track the school year based on our seasons. So, congratulations to your fall, and of course, good luck in the winter. And then, a special shout-out to Mikael Sullivan and Tumi Chiapetta, both of those young ladies qualified for the state cross-country competition on November 2nd down in the southeast side of Columbus, so congratulations and good luck to those ladies. Couple events coming up, who will be attending the North Coast Ohio Student Leadership Conference? We have eight students that represent Hicksville, a bit of finest college, with 31 other school districts in the six-county area. Always a great event. We are beginning our student remediation for the end, of course, fall testing retakes. Again, on the high school side, we retake these tests in fall because we have to earn certain points to make it all doable to receive a diploma and actually graduate. Mr. Hunter hit this already, the data dive, we're looking forward to that. Mr. Josh Clark, our ESD rep, is working with us this year, he's done a really nice job. He was a, again, he's a former principal, kind of understands kind of what we're going through as principals here in the school districts. And he's gonna break down our 2018 spring testing data, look for, again, opportunities, challenges, areas that we could hopefully improve, focus on, all that kind of stuff. And he'll, we'll actually meet with the middle school ELA for a day, and we'll get the high school ELA teachers for a day. He'll make a great, great level of content specific to those teachers, that ways as relevant as possible. So, we're looking forward to that, and then, of course, we're hoping to see as many veterans as possible on Friday and November 9th. Thank you.
Tell me here, what banquet it was, I missed that.
OSBA.
I'm sorry, I'm forgetting that.
It was the ELA banquet?
Yes.
All right, Kristen.
Um, Friday, October 26th, we had our first principal's math club dance party. We had 54 little kiddos up there on the table. October 19th, we began a new incentive in the elementary called the Power of a Positive Phone Call. And so, each week, a grade level nominates a student, and that kiddo can sit, come down to my office, sit in my chair, and make a phone call home to their parent, let them know why they're calling home. And so, it was really nice, the first week I had a parent teacher's issue, it was just so exciting. We try to pick the ones that, maybe it's a little bit more challenging to get student of the month, but we're finding things throughout the week that they're doing, and try to raise them up that way, take their picture while they're sitting in my office chair, and post them on Facebook. Last week, we had our third grade ear test. We have four more kiddos to test tomorrow, then we will be complete with that. I also have decided to do the teacher of the quarter in the elementary, and so for about a week and a half, I've been collecting nominations. I sent home a letter with a little area that the kiddos could sign, or could create, or have parents help them write it, and then they brought them in. And I had about 50 teacher nominations, and it was really, they were really fun to read, all of the teachers got those today. And I randomly chose one, so Mrs. Color was our teacher of the quarter, but then I also provided two $15 gift cards to the two teachers that had the most nominations from students. This week is ribbon week, and it's the theme is Say Boo to Drug, so we kicked that off on Friday, and let the students dress up as Character Day to introduce this week, and Ms. Johns is going around and doing her themed lessons for drug prevention.
I think it's great you guys can do the teacher of the quarter, I think that's, that's awesome. And we recognize the kids a lot, and we normally recognize teachers individually, so I think that's, that's a great thing to have there.
All right, finance committee report. Oh, do you want to do this first?
Like, whatever you want to do, I can wait.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to hit on a few important parts here. Mr. Hunter, you want to help click a button if necessary? I'll raise this up a little bit. Oh, wow, okay. First off, anyone in our district, whether it's a administrator, a staff member, a parent, anyone can access this data now. This is public information, so if anyone went to the Ohio Department of Education website and wanted to see what kind of school Hicksville currently is considered, you just go to ODE, of course, and then this bottom left side, there's a link here. And of course, once you go to this link, you type in your school district's name. Now, district overview, we are a B school. Now, a couple things here, when the, when the paper came out, or when the paper, I think it came out already, it had all our rankings and everything for our local area schools. I'm not gonna lie, we were a little disappointed because we did so well, we're all gonna cover this one up right here. But then, as you can see, we are A, B school in pretty much every single category, all right? In fact, I think we had more As and Bs in pretty much any school in about the six to eight county area. Yet our overall rating was a B, so I was a little disappointed in that, because there were schools that had Cs and Bs and As and Bs, and it just didn't calculate right. If you're a teacher and you, you calculate averages for grades, it really wasn't making sense. But definitely that index, that performance index, overall rating comes into play, and sometimes that formula doesn't, it's not an equal amount or amount in each kind of category, how it ends up. So, I guess a few things that I want to, I want to cover first, is I'm gonna cover each category very, very quickly. And let's go ahead and tell them where we have our challenge at, because I want to get this out of the way and then focus on the good. So, when everybody's watching this at home, they remember all the good stuff I said, not the last thing I said about the bad. So, prepare for success, this is our biggest challenge right now. And first off, yes, we did receive an F, and there were a lot of schools that received Fs. Mr. Hunter, can you answer me this? What was the highest grade that you saw in the Prepare for Success?
A D.
A D, okay. And we honestly have one error in how we reported through EMIS that caused us to get an F instead of a D. We should've been a D, and this is the problem here, okay? And we're learning, okay, how this works. And over here, we see all this in... And over here, we see all this information, all the, all these, uh, these numbers. I found out that Power School is actually split into two categories. You have your local reports, your local custom reports, which is data and information that's shared and calculated and created for us as a, as a district. Okay, that parents can, can recognize. Uh, certain system reports that Mr. Shaker will create to assist us in gathering data, sharing data, um, you know, figuring out, you know, certain processes, what works best for our district, what doesn't work. You know, uh, our, uh, our, our actual grade cards that we print off is created as a local report. And then you have the EMIS side of it. Okay? So whether it was myself, uh, the guidance counselors, anyone who's in Power School teachers, I actually thought it was all that information was, I guess, able to be grasped and used to EMIS. Well, that's not true. So a perfect example would be this. The reason we got an F instead of a D is if you get down here and you look at our AP classes, and again, this data is from the previous two years. So technically, this is, uh, I believe twenty fifteen, sixteen data. That's on the Prepare for Success, twenty sixteen, seventeen data, Prepare for Success. Okay? And you can see ACT participation, ACT remediation free, very few people take the SAT. We received some honors diplomas, uh, some industry recognition credentials. Now, AP participation, you can see that there were thirty-seven kids that took, let's say, the AP, just AP classes. When Mrs. Fleming was here, she taught AP English, two sections of that. That's why that number is so high because currently we only offer one AP course. All right? So this reflects two years ago, who was taking AP English. Now, you'll notice it says exam score of three or better, less than one person or one percent got that. That doesn't make any sense. So I pulled out the data, we have some part data we were looking at and saying, we had twenty-one kids get a three or higher. Why is it saying we had less than one kid or whatever it is get a three or higher? Well, we kind of found, kind of find out that on the EMIS side reporting, you have to go in and enter your AP scores into that and then the state pulls from that through EMIS, which becomes a part of this report. And we didn't know that. Okay? Um, we spoke to the guidance counselor, we spoke to Mr. Hoffman and, uh, and they had it on the same page because our guidance counselor was putting that into the local report side, not knowing that there's an EMIS report side that gets pulled for the state debt. So that simple error there alone cost us, you know, one letter grade. Now, again, as Mr. Hunter said, every other district in the area had a D in that area. Okay? And again, what we're noticing, the trend we're noticing is this. Number one, you have to make sure you report the right information. Okay? No brainer. But number two, with college credit plus, that's a big push and AP classes are a big push on this side. And when you start looking at the AP side, our AP numbers are going to go down a little bit. But most districts' AP classes are going down because if you're a teacher and, and you know this and I know, uh, Mrs. Carrickson and I have had this, I'm sorry, Ozzer, and I have had this conversation. But that's just old age right there. You call people by their main names. Um, but what we've noticed is the trend is that if you're a teacher and you want to teach AP class, that's great. Because that's a full one-year class and then at the end of that one year, you have to take an exam and you might get a three or higher. So you might earn a college credit and then you might get that college to accept that college credit. It's kind of, it's kind of a tough sell. But now you can go through college credit plus, take a sixteen-week course and you can earn three college credits guaranteed that should be able to transfer to most state colleges in the state of Ohio. And by the way, that's just one semester. You can do a second semester that also earns six college credits. So the trend data we're noticing is there's a lot more dual enrollment credit, a lot more credits being earned on the college side, which increases and has the potential opportunities to increase people's scores moving forward. So the AP side is going to be a tougher sell than the college credit plus side. Now, we don't like kids leaving Hicksville to go to the finance college. We don't like kids leaving Hicksville to go to the state, but we understand why they want to do it. It's a great opportunity. What we'd like to see happen is the, is the potential of getting more adjunct professors, okay? More teachers in our district that can teach college credit courses. Okay? That way, the kids are staying on campus, the kids are earning college credit and of course, there's a teacher right here available to them all the time. So that's kind of our push and that's what we're looking at. So I apologize for the F. Um, again, no one did very well in this category, but we did miss out on one opportunity that made us look worse than some schools. But we weren't the only school to have this problem. All right? So again, that's the challenge and this is where we need to improve. So if we want to go back a slide or a screen. Okay. Now, as you can see our achievement, if you click on, do more data please. I want to point out something that's extremely important here on this right column. Again, the B, eighty-seven point five percent, these are those indicators we talked about. And if you scroll down, Mr. Hunter, you can see you have our third grade indicators, fourth grade, fifth grade, the content areas, ELA, uh, math. And you get the upper grade levels, you have your science and you have your social studies tied in there. Okay, your biology, geometry, all kinds of stuff. Now, we accurate twenty-four of these, twenty-one of these twenty-four indicators. That was as many or more than you ever had at the school I'm aware of. Mr. Hunter, do you think of it as a school? Mrs. Hoffman? Ottawa Hills is the one I think of. Okay? So again, we scroll up and see this B. I was disappointed in that. I started thinking, we, we have met more indicators than any other school that we're aware of in this area, yet we only got a B. Okay? This is why schools are calling us. But they're saying, how are you guys passing these indicators? That's what they're asking us. Okay? And, and again, we are true believers that these essential questions and how questions are formatted and how they're created, how they match the test style of questions, we think that's very important. And now we evolved into, uh, we call them essential assessments this year. Uh, we're trying to give her busy work for our kids. I hope that our teachers do that because, or for our teachers. So our teachers won't give busy work to our kids. But anyway, uh, the, these essential assessments that we're going to collect once a quarter is saying, hey, we are providing assessments to our kids that look like what are on these state end of course assessments. All right? They look like what the state test is going to be. And there's a reason we feel a lot of schools are struggling with, with this piece still because a lot of schools are so complaining, saying, paper pencil, paper pencil, we did way better with paper pencil. Well, let's think about this. If your kids are doing paper pencil tests all year long and then May rolls around, April, May rolls around and now you want to give them an online test, they're not going to be used to that. They're not going to know what they're, what they're seeing. It's going to be a first time for the years of doing that. There's going to be user errors. There's going to be complications that they're not sure how to correct. Okay? There's going to be problems. We're preparing the kids all year long with online assessments. We get to the state test online and guess what? They're comfortable doing it. They're used to it. Hey, I've seen this before. Hey, this looks familiar. Hey, this isn't so bad. And that's one reason why we think we've had success. And it's not, I mean, it really isn't rocket science, but when we talk about, you know, why have we had this success? It's kind of a basic response to a lot of the schools. We tell them, because we ask them, it's like, well, you guys do this? No. You guys do online questions that look like the state test? No. What about your assessments? No. You know, it's very important. Then we talk about depth of knowledge, depth of knowledge questions. Okay, we don't just take online questions. The depth of knowledge are, are the types of questions we're using that truly are, uh, questions that make you think. Okay? It's, it's more than just like, you know, the, the why questions. We're talking about questions that, that pertain to critical thinking skills because that's what's on the state test. So we're very, very proud of our district here. Um, and then of course, on this side, we talk about that index rating of one oh three point three. That's the score that put us at forty-fifth. Is that correct? Forty-fifth in the state. So we take all the public schools in the state of Ohio. They're ranked according to that number and ours was the forty-fifth highest. Okay? And, and again, you can see that a lot of it's based on the number of students that scored in certain areas, whether it's advanced plus, advanced accelerated, so on and so forth. So again, kudos to our students and our staff. Go ahead, back please. A few more data. Um, this area here, again, um, we, we talk about our progress areas that we, again, they do these like projections, as they call them, predictive, predicted scores, projected scores. Um, and what we need to look at, what we need to have growth, that's kind of what they're covering here. Uh, I'm going to use this one because this is actually kind of boring. Uh, you want to go back? Uh, we don't, we don't use this one as much. Um, the gap closing is important. We're talking about, um, different groups of students within our school, whether it's based on ethnicity, whether it's based on, you know, um, if you're on an IEP, if you're specialized in, you know, different demographics, things like that. And as you can see, these were the predicted scores that we should, we should reach at least these points and move above and beyond, you know, whether it's all students, if it's not white, not Hispanic, you know, socioeconomic groups, stuff like that. So go ahead, back please. Maybe that's part of like that momentum award we received where we're kind of that gap closing that, you know, reaching those students. The graduation rate, I'm not going to hit on this one real quick. Um, this is the one that kind of scares me. Uh, as you can see, we are definitely above the state average, which I believe is eighty-eight. Will you cover over that green bar, please? Eighty-four, what about this one over here? Oh, sorry, man. Eighty-six, okay. Um, last year we were ninety-three point five. Now, the bad thing about being a small school is this, you know, when you have small classes, one kid means a lot. Three or four years ago, the state of Ohio made a wonderful decision. They decided that, um, the, excuse me, I should back it. It used to be that if someone wanted to drop off, take their GED or just drop out of school, they'd have to go fill out a piece of paper, give it to Mr. Crenshaw and he would either approve it and say he's a GED or say no, he needs to stay in school. It's pretty much that simple. Okay? Uh, now, the, the word's getting out that parents can come in and say, if Mike gets out of the U.S. school, they're going to get their GED, they just sign him out. Okay? And I hate to tell you this, but we already had three kids this year do that. And, and, and this matters to me and I'm going to say it. Uh, um, two of the kids already that have done it moved in last year to juniors from out of state and, and they're, I mean, they're, they're no commitment to graduating. And that's the hard part is when you come in from a different state to Ohio, you know, if you're coming from Montana, Indiana, you need eighteen credits to graduate, you need twenty-three Hicksville. Okay? Or you need twenty from Michigan, you need twenty-three to Hicksville. Oh, by the way, the state test, you have to score all these points for your senior. You moved to Hicksville, Ohio or Eastville, Ohio. Remember those eighteen points, those end of course assessments? They adjusted to a lower number of tests, but they still got to pass all those tests. They only have one year to do it. Okay? They have to accumulate like total, like eleven points or fourteen points depending on what they need. Because some of those scores transference, but again, it can become a struggle. I think it becomes intimidating. Uh, and so unfortunately, uh, like I said, it's a lot easier to do when you don't have to worry about that guy signing off on it. That, you know, parents are coming in and withdrawing. Also, when you're eighteen now, um, in the state of Ohio, they give these eighteen-year-olds a lot of, uh, I guess, responsibility is the best word to use right now. Uh, you know, if, if Craig was eighteen years old, turns eighteen today and he walks in the high school and has his business library, you know what? I'm eighteen now. I don't want to send anything to my parents. I don't have access to my Power School. I want to change this, change that. They need nothing. We have to abide by that by court of law because they're eighteen years old. You know, and, and that's another thing is with attendance and other requirements, it's hard to hold them capital at eighteen because the course won't touch them stuff because they're an adult. So the juvenile courses start holding that in, which is making it more difficult for schools to keep that right there. So I am a little concerned with graduation rates, but that's going to be across the state, in my opinion. So I'm going to point that out. Go ahead, back one, Mr. Hunter. And if I miss anything, Mr. Hunter or Mrs. Hoffman, please let me know. Uh, do you want me to say anything about the amariss K-three readers, Mrs. Hoffman? Now, if you want to click on that, we can just take a real quick peek at it. Um, as you can see, uh, it says here forty-eight students moved on to track, which is a good thing. Sixty-five students started off track. So now, we talked about that remediation piece, we talked about that time invested in getting these kids back on track. Uh, third grade guarantee. The, the red is our focus point. So twenty-nine percent of those kids, we're going to provide remediation and prepare them for the next testing session. Correct, Mrs. Hoffman? Okay, that takes manpower, that takes time, that takes money, that takes all those fun things. All right? But again, in the end, ninety-eight percent of them entered third grade guarantee. But our goal is this, you know, of course, to get as many kids as possible to be in the beginning so that we can continue to move on. And we already covered that. We want to talk about that. So that's the district overview report card in a nutshell. We do have work to do. We want to be better. Uh, but anyone has access to this information now. And then like Mr. Hunter said earlier, we're forty-fifth in the state. The breakdown, um, of us moving up to third by, by our, I think it was, was the average income, average median income, they took that into account and, and, you know, we jumped from twenty-fifth to third overall, which is great. And to give you an example, like Ottawa Hills, okay? Ottawa Hills is, which is a very, very nice, uh, district. Um, they went from like number two to like number sixty-eight. I mean, they should be proud of that, to be honest with you, considering. All right? But there are some schools in our, in our own area that some moved up just like we did. Others, you know, dropped fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred spots. So it's actually pretty interesting. So I think we should be really proud of what we've done here. Yeah, thanks Jeff.
Okay, finance report.
Uh, we met one day, last Monday and looked at the five-year forecast as a group. And, um, really, nothing major. I mean, there wasn't any, any issues per se that were pointed out as far as number wise. And, uh, they have some recommendations that they would like to see, um, added to the forecast and we'll kind of probably address them as we, as we move forward. More planning, future planning, uh, maybe the way we're listing some things on the, on the five-year forecast. But, um, but overall, we were, we met for about a half hour and went over and our numbers, um, uh, looking better than they did last year. Obviously, we still have deficits spending moving forward in here in a couple of years, but, uh, a little bit better than it was, so. Yeah, was it about a half hour? Forty minutes? Well, we came up to your office. She was on the hot seat. And she didn't.
Okay, superintendent. Are you glad you're here?
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to be here. I don't mean short. A special thanks to my admin team who never calls me and lets me know of any issues, anything here at school because they take care of it. And I want you to know, give me peace of mind in my absence the last couple of weeks. And I'll probably be out yet this week and find out tomorrow what's happening, but, um, I appreciate it. I did slip in last week for a meeting that Jeff needed before and took care of something. So I managed to do that without a problem. So special thanks to them and Eric for holding down the fort while I've been gone. I will say that, uh, I have been getting online and taking care of the stuff that Melissa needs and I don't think that's an issue for you, right?
Yeah.
Okay, keeping up with emails best I can, so. Um, Eric already mentioned the numbers, but, uh, one area that he didn't mention that I think is important for the community to know as well is that those numbers, uh, and on the doors and the windows will also help in the event that there was an intruder in the building and the police, uh, needed to know what room they were in easily, easily see where and, uh, track as needed in the event of an intruder. So they're not, uh, uh, you know, we, we tried different things, different sizes before we put those numbers out. And I don't think that they look bad or distracting on the building. I think the num, the numbers on the doors are appropriate and the, the numbers on the doors are above every door, even the ones that we don't even use, that, that people don't use every door's number. So, uh, it'll certainly help if, uh, we ever had to rely on that. So that's a good thing. Thanks, Eric. Good with that. Um, and they had mentioned that they have had calls from people in the state regarding the report card. And I too have had, uh, superintendents getting in touch with me in regards to our success on the report card. So, you know, a big shout out to our teachers who work all year long, really hard, uh, preparing the kids for those tasks because, uh, you know, to score where we did is pretty amazing. So we're proud of everybody and thank them for all their hard work and, and getting us through all of this. So awesome. Thank you. Go ahead.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Whether or not this may be removed, first I guess I should ask. Anything? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
Carrie? Yes, Hayden?
Yes.
Yes. Ozzer?
Yes.
Carrie, five to zero. All right, there are motions to approve the minutes and the financials. All right, the minutes from the regular board meeting on September tenth, two thousand and eighteen. The treasures report, the cash reconciliation as of September two thousand and eighteen and financial statements for September two thousand and eighteen. Accept the following donations, one thousand dollars from Sweetwater Sound Incorporated for the high school drama fund. Discussion, listen.
Carrie? Oh, did you want a discussion? Oh, I thought you were looking at me. Sorry. Um, the only thing, I mean, I do believe that, um, with the Sweetwater Sound, I believe Elaine Germain, I think, had reached out to Sweetwater and I see that they were gracious enough to give us a thousand dollars for her performance here this year. I believe she'd do a immediate release.
Thank you.
So that is greatly appreciated. And I hope anybody else... And I don't know if anybody has any questions?
I hear the comments left, but are you just saying anything, any questions?
Again, appreciate the update, hope it helps, so, yeah, just keep me updated.
Anything else? All righty. Roll call, please.
Carrier. Yes, Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazer.
Yes.
Someone.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Okay, I need a motion to approve the five-year forecast.
I'll do it.
Recommend to approve the five-year forecast for the October two thousand and eighteen submission to the Department of Education as presented. Okay, questions, discussion?
You weren't asked to do that.
Yeah, I was saying, we did, I did present the finance committee. Um, the numbers are looking better. Um, I did tweak some things down a little bit and tried to look at our revenue sources. Um, the revenues are pretty much in line with what they probably were last year. I don't see a lot of significant changes. Um, valuation grew, were up a little bit, but due to our, our ag values that also dropped, CAUV formula's changing a little bit, so I think we'll see a little drop in that. Um, we also had some, I think there was some, back in February, my collections were made. We got kind of a higher collection rate from people because I think there was a lot of, um, people taking advantage of a, like a tax credit. So we had a lot more people pay in the first half for the whole year instead of waiting for the second half to come through. So I think they were up maybe a little bit in the first half, but hopefully, um, everything's up for the most part, like I said, revenue-wise, it's pretty steady. Um, expenditure-wise, they tried to tweak, um, the personnel services and the benefits pieces to kind of match maybe more so, kind of go line by line to see if those are kind of trending the right way. Um, employee benefits are percent increase that will go into effect. January one will be six percent for the healthcare and then everything else will remain the same, so. Yeah, which I think that's very good because I think usually with health benefits, usually they're between twelve to eighteen percent increases every year. And we somehow lucked out, I think with the consortium we're in, to hold for the six percent. I think last year it was less than that. I think it was like four percent. So we, I usually predict eight percent going forward, but I think that's very conservative, but we seem to stay right in that general frame. So I do show us kind of ending the year with a twenty-eight hundred dollar, um, to the good. Our revenue is over expenditures, so that could change depending on how things fluctuate, but hopefully that is, yeah, that's pretty tight. And then going forward, we will, we showed deficit spending each year. Hopefully, nobody looks at years four and five, maybe year three, but for the most part, we're looking, we're looking okay in that department. Um, I don't know if you want me to go forward with the rest of my treasures update. Um, I just wanted to, one thing, I really talked about it. I'm just moving forward from this forecast, the new day's forecast. We wanna start making sure that we have, um, capital, future expenditures, that kind of things, um, that we don't really have right now with the forecast. So that's just one of those things that we plan to be working in there. And so we're accommodating as it is, but, um, just okay, but this is, we're gonna get those things.
So kind of go along with what Jeff, Jeff was saying. Down here on, on this version of the five-year forecast where it talks about, you know, the textbooks and the buses and kind of filling the line, even though it's coming out of this line, it's kind of breaking things down a little bit more. And, uh, that was the recommendation from the finance committee, we're looking at, you know, what we spend staffing-wise with all the benefits and everything, that's pretty much, there's not much we can do with that. And the recommendation from the FOC and what we kind of were planning on doing at our work session tonight was looking at some of, like, DSC money that we're spending out there. You know what, maybe we can't do anything, maybe we're doing everything absolutely perfect, but you know what, we're just gonna take a look at it. And that was, um, that's what we all felt might be the one area that maybe we could, you know, take a little bit of money at, so.
Um, other than the five-year forecast, I did, you know, what we try and look at it. The cafeteria fund is looking, it's looking better. The, the, I mean, yeah, we're still in the red, uh, right now, but I think each year as we go through, when you're looking at the fiscal year nineteen estimated cash flow based on fiscal year eighteen numbers, you're seeing that number go down because that's about putting in the actual for that month. It seems like the price differences have made a big, a big difference to the, to the bottom line. I mean, I think we've, yes, yeah, so now we see that the trend is going back down, so.
It was three thousand, September.
Yeah, I think you're.
Three thousand nine hundred last September.
Right, we're up thirty-five hundred for the month of September, so I mean, that's, that's a big chunk of change.
That's one more.
That's one month, so, and that was like the full month of September. So it'll be interesting to see how, you know, as we go through the year and with food prices or food costs, and then towards the end of the year, usually the food costs kind of taper off because we're saving.
And two, you know, after a middle year, three year, and how, you know, you do save that portion. You're spending one of the money for the school year to stock up on whatever you may, you're not spending here as much because you're running through all the stock that you have. You know, so that, I mean, that carries over and stuff, so.
So hoping, fingers crossed, we don't have to make a transfer review. It's very minimal at the end of the year to kind of get us over the hump. But we also will have, um, at the beginning of January, we will have an employee that has retired, but she will then no longer be on payroll. So that'll make a big difference to the bottom line, too. So especially since she was one of the high, you know, on the top of the scale, so that'll make a big difference. Um, levy information, um, I did include in your packet some correspondence from Nentor. If we wanna put anything on the ballot for the income tax levy, we have the hundred-day deadline is January twenty-fifth. And I think we're gonna talk a little bit more probably in, in work session and also probably in the future months as to how we plan on moving forward with that. I did give you in there then too, a copy of some, uh, you know, how Secretary of State kind of what their proposed guideline is. I either called the lady or I emailed the lady at, um, Ohio Department of Taxation and said, if you have a checklist or something that we can go through. I think what we're really gonna need to do is probably get ahold of our attorney and say, look, this is what we're looking at, could you please draft us some legislation or... And I think that's the way we need to move it, probably get the information from them because everybody comes turning through, hoping that they can help me. They can't actually give me like deadlines that things need to be accomplished. So I don't want it to be that we're waiting on the twenty-fifth and we skip a step or don't have something done. So I think we probably need to get with, um, our legal counsel to kind of get some, some guidance on that if that's something that we're looking at possibly doing. Um, I gave you the five-year forecast, and I will say that our financials for September, I know that they look pretty solid. We're, there wasn't anything that was totally jumping out at me, that's anything that needed to be looked at. I don't know if anybody had any questions over any of those current documents I gave you. And that's all I, all I have.
Okay, anything else? Ready? Roll call, please.
Carrier. Yes, Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazer.
Yes.
Someone.
Yes.
As a Title I A tutor for two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year at a rate of one hundred fifteen dollars for the maximum of one hundred seventy-nine days to be funded through federal Title I A grant funds. Recommend to approve Andrea Deal as a pride teacher at a rate of twenty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents per hour for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year. Recommend to approve Melissa Lydell for lunch study supervision at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year. Recommend to approve the following as SLO committee members for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year. Mike Blue, Sandy Wilson, Percy Kaufman, Andrea Deal, Chris Gagin, Jeff Ott, Andy Hunter, Melice Quis, Jeff Slattery, Heather Taylor. Recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year. Mackenzie Bens Staley, girls' basketball. Any discussion?
It's actually Coleman, uh, Staley.
Okay. Can you spell it for me, please?
C-O-L-E-M-A-N.
Okay.
Melissa Holman.
Mackenzie. Mackenzie.
Is it still Bean Holman, just?
Well, I'm not sure if she's putting both on there, but I know she's now Holman.
Okay, ready? Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please. Carrier.
Yes, Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazer.
Yes.
Someone.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. I need a motion for the employee with classified staff.
So, closer.
Staff. Recommend to accept the resignation from Greg Collins effective September twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Recommend to approve Sheila Baker as a classified substitute for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year. Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Stacy Wagner as bus driver, one point seven five hours per day, with zero years' experience for the remainder of the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year, pending her completion of bus recertification. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year. Pete Higgins, assistant wrestling coach, Lauren Olson, elementary musical assistant. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year. Shelley Comiso, matinee advisor, James Miller, wrestling, Christine Steeman, girls' basketball. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Carrier.
Let's see. Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazer.
Yes.
Someone.
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero with one extension. Okay, I need a motion to approve the other business. Jen? Recommend to approve the wrestling team to attend the following overnight match, January twenty-fifth through January twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at L.A. Recommend to authorize the superintendent to grant approval for teams involved in overnight state tournaments for fall, winter, and spring sporting events. Recommend to approve a nine-to-ten-day Europe trip proposal to Spain, France, and Italy. The anticipated days of travel are June twenty-second through July first of two thousand and twenty. Any discussion?
Because sometimes, um, they're at the last minute, if something would come up, our tournament or something, it'd be at the last minute, and it wouldn't be a board needing to approve that.
Okay.
And then the Europe trip.
It's, it's different with.
In addition.
Yeah. This is Crowe, Crowe Becker, and this is Liddell. So obviously, it's still correct.
And this works, this is.
There's no unreasonable hold of that. So the guy here typically does more of a Western Europe, Northern Europe, Germany, uh, England, France. You know, and Liddell's going to do Italy, Spain, or on the Mediterranean, so.
Are they both the same year?
No.
Okay.
Every year.
One's two thousand and nineteen and one's twenty?
Yes.
Okay. I forgot. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please. Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazer.
Yes.
Someone.
Motion carried, five to zero. Okay, is there any holes business? The only thing I wondered was, last month we talked about those pupil activity permits. And I know they got, they got put on that final forms thing, correct? Okay. So we're still, we do not recommend them for a position, or we don't approve them on board until they have that part done, correct?
Yeah, you pull people on, and you're trying to work me in.
And the pupil activity permit includes what parts? Like, what do they have to do? That's their background check.
They, they have BRCI, FBI, they have, they have to do, they have to apply online for pupil activity permit. And then there are several, I can move on, I have it on my computer, but it is like a concussion course, Lindsey's law course, uh, like a first coaching, like a coaching, first aid. There's several different pieces that go into that.
Kind of all depends. If you're, if you're in athletics, you're a coach, there's a lot more additional items. If you're a class advisor or some sort of paid, I don't say a paid volunteer, but you have other, these are paid. You know, they may not have all of those on there. But the big concern is, you know, to get the ball rolling, we've got to have that pupil activity permit. At least we completely pay them if they have that. We have coaches like at the school that, um, like the sudden cardiac arrest or CPR. If I'm a baseball coach, I've got everything, I got my pupil activity permit, I've got my, everything's good except for my sudden cardiac arrest because that goes out in December. Most coaches are gonna wait until closer to December to do that, especially if you're a baseball coach. You know, if I'm a basketball, if I'm a football coach, Lucas Smith's may expire in July. Everything else is good, and they'll have to have that done by July, which I'm seeing. But the big thing is, I think we, I spoke to Melissa, we need to have a policy in place that states exactly what's required of our coaches and what's required of our class advisors, what's required of volunteers, because everybody knows even the volunteer expectations are probably going to change, right, Melissa?
I think, I think, tell me, you know, I think this, maybe you're kind of bringing that up different. We have been advised by our legal counsel as to what, who and what needs to have, you know, what everyone needs to have.
Anyone in the papers, this is kind of a P.
They have to personally have, so they, and it doesn't matter if you're a coach. It does get very, very confusing because you have a elementary musical director that has to take all these pieces of a coaching. You know, the pupil activity permit has a lot of coaching, and they are going, why am I taking this? I'm not a coach. Well, because you're in charge of kids, so you need all these things. ODE, there's a lot of, as with everything with ODE, there's always a lot of going back and forth. Nobody ever has a true defined, there's no true definition of who needs what. And I think there was a group of treasurers that met with a group of legislators saying, look, this is crazy, we call ODE, we're asking for help, what does an advisor need? What does this person need? And they give you no, no reference. So then we have to go search toward, you know, reach out to our legal counsel and say, okay, here's a situation, what do we need? And they will usually try to err on the side of being most conservative so nothing will ever be too troubled. Because I do think that you do hear of a lot of, a lot of treasurers getting their hands smacked and having findings against them because they're paying out for people that they don't actually have certificates for. So it's a very hot topic, and I think treasurers and superintendents are, are, um, both on the same page when it's coming to certification. Regardless, people don't like it, it's a lot of money. They're not getting paid a lot of money to do what they're doing, but if it's a person, if it's a teacher, they can get like a three, four, or five-year pupil activity permit, but if they are, you guys are just regular, you know, I mean, you're staff, but you're not certified staff, then they only issue a three-year permit. So if you're an advisor and you start as a freshman, then you go three years with your child, and in the fourth year, you have to go get another one. It's kind of crazy, but that's what, what they do. And then they have to go through all that, right, or two. It's not, it's not an easy thing, and there's a lot of people, and the sad thing is, there's a lot of people that when they find out that they happen to take this piece and they have to spend that money, then they say, I don't want to be an advisor, I don't want to do that. And like, and you can't win them.
What about, um, when it comes to what control we have, like final forms? What I'm saying is we need to develop a policy locally of what is required of an advisor, what is required of a volunteer. That's what we need to figure out. And if you're, are you telling me when you call legal counsel, they're saying your volunteers have to have a pupil activity permit now? Are you gonna have to go through all of that?
There, I think I exported onto you what our legal counsel stances on a lot of that. So if it's a, they are a volunteer, they're, they're still working with kids, there's still certain certifications that they want them to have because they're dealing with kids.
Okay, so, but again, you said certificate. What I'm asking is.
And I will forward it to you.
Locally, what, do we have to build a local policy? Or is there gonna require a document given to us that says? Because you're right, what's gonna sink is we're already losing paid people that want to step up and do things because it's not with the time and the effort, you know, the money. And now you're telling me our volunteers are gonna have to.
Like projects.
Uh.
I think, Jeff.
They haven't figured it out.
Good point, uh, that we do need to have some kind of written guideline. And I, like, let's say the musical, for instance. So is the director of the musical who doesn't, is not a teacher, you know, what if a favorite buyer versus the seamstress who's just helping out with the musical and is not a teacher? It doesn't, you know, like, those kind of different positions.
and doesn't, you know, like those kind of different positions, probably it would be good to have some kind of.
What would it be nice? The person in charge of students.
Right, yeah. So it'd be really great if O D E would kind of give us, and that's kind of been the push by the treasurers with legislators saying, this is crazy, O D E needs to help us because are we over certifying people? Can they get away with something with like a people act, not people activity permit, but like a student monitoring permit? Can they get, you know, could they just have this certification? I think there's a push on both sides. Do I agree that we probably need a policy saying this is what they need, but as of right now, if you are in a paid position by the school and you were dealing with kids, you have to have a people activity permit.
To answer your question, Jeff, on volunteers, like in coaching for example, there are several volunteers. I think if I remember correctly speaking to the attorneys, they don't need one, but they're not allowed to be left alone with students.
And then, you know, we talked about volunteers in the classroom. That's, that's our concern is.
Yeah, absolutely. There's been discussions on that and they're, they're going that direction and if they do, there won't be any volunteers.
Yeah, I think you forward me, you know, stating here on the side, it's gonna protect us. We, we have a volunteer come in, wants to donate their time to do this. Okay, well, that's fine, but get a background check, get a people activity permit, they'll let you come in and read our gift, like.
Unless, unless they're not being left alone with kids.
Well, true.
I mean, if I come in and do math flashcards in the classroom with a child, that's different than if I take that child to a separate room and work with them one on one by myself. It's a different liability there.
And then, and that's where the old policy where we have to get with our attorneys is okay, we need to guide them because O D E is to give Jack squat, what we need to check ourselves that way when, you know, when I hire a class advisor, I say, this is what you need. And there's a list of things and it's that simple.
And I think there should be a piece of paper that that person has to sign that they received that piece of paper.
Yes.
And that's what we go to you to say, I'll up on this person.
Yeah, and so our coaches know that the volunteer coach can't be left alone or that our teachers know that, I guess, volunteer are wonderful, but they can't take their children, you know, to cover all those bases.
Okay, so.
And final forms, I know you brought that up.
Yes.
That is a key organizational tool that's gonna help. And, you know, being the athletic director, Jeff Bog, he can't say enough about that. When she's talking about like these sudden cardiac arrests, CPR thing, all that stuff. Not only does that help organize, he can check off what they have to make sure that they're 100% eligible to coach, okay? Because as long as they have that people activity permit, we're hiring. Now, before you start coaching, you gotta have all these things though. That's how we're doing that, okay? And, and what's nice about that too is once, you know, Jared Wondery, let's say he's working the track program, once he's in that system, it has a countdown and it puts all of your certifications in chronological order, but it has a countdown. And once you get within 90 days of your sudden cardiac arrest expiring, it sends him an email. And all, okay, it says, hey Jared Wondery, your sudden cardiac arrest expires in 90 days, and then in 60 days it doesn't, and in 30 days it doesn't. But at the same time, the athletic director goes with his coaching staff and the H R department is doing this with the staff staff, they can go in there and click apply, says, I'm gonna see anyone within 100 days of expiration of anything. They click it, it gives you a list, it tells you, and you can send out a reminder email to everyone. And they should be already getting those. That's what's nice about it, is being able to track and regulate and notify. So that's definitely the benefit of that.
Okay, so then tonight we said we need to get some kind of policy about the new suspension policy, how much that's gonna account for grades. Now we're talking about we need to give a policy for these people activity permits, how that's not happening in our district. You know, you just a letter saying, thank you for accepting this position, that I'm not, cannot be hired by the board until you know, but, so is that something you take care of? Okay. All right, great. Any other old business? Okay. We had said it last month's meeting, we're gonna have a discussion about the 2019-20 school calendar. I already said last month, I think we should not mess with the calendar, that's just my personal opinion as far as encouraging responsibility, the leadership, life skills, those kids are learning through 4H and scabbing and things are doing it fair. But we said last month we're gonna talk about that and help with the decision. So what are all of your thoughts? Is it?
It would be our recommendation to not change the date of the school year and not look at it again for several years down the road. Who will we be considering for several years down the road? That would be our recommendation. Drop it, in other words.
I'll move here.
Great. Good. Okay. We do not have a need for an executive session tonight. We are gonna have a book session after this meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Jen, great. We would adjourn this meeting until the next regular board meeting, it will be held on Monday, November 19th at 16:00. That is one week later than usual because of the state school intervention. Okay. Roll call please.
Carrier? Yes. Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Wondery?
Motion carried five to zero. Regular session meeting is here. We'll meet about five minutes.